Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 6 City Council Meeting to Order. I'm calling us to order now. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. Councilmember Ray will not be with us this evening. He has an excused absence. The first item on our agenda tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple of special business items today, and I'm just going to check with the clerk. Would you like me to move to the podium, or should I do them from where I am tonight? Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you. So, under Special Business, we have ID 1189 LGBTQIA+ Pride Month Proclamation. And tonight, I have Susan Vosler with Eastside Pride joining us virtually to accept the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month Proclamation. Thank you. Nice to see you again, Susan.
Hello. Thank you.
At the end of the proclamation, I'll also invite you to speak if you would like to this evening. So, thanks for joining us. Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots, which occurred in June of 1969 and are generally recognized as the catalyst of the LGBTQIA+ rights movement; and whereas city council and staff have committed to make Issaquah an inclusive and welcoming community for all, including the LGBTQI+ community; and whereas all members of the Issaquah community, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, intersex, and asexual, have the right to feel safe, not to be discriminated against, and to live without the threat of violence or harassment; and whereas supporting Issaquah's LGBTQIA+ community also aligns with the city's strategic plans, guiding principles of both people and equity; and whereas the LGBTQIA+ community has made great strides, however, work remains in order to achieve full equality, inclusion, and acceptance; whereas Issaquah is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of all its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city. Now therefore, I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of June to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Issaquah, and I encourage all residents to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists, respect the rights of all people, recognize the contributions and achievements of the LGBTQIA+ community, and to celebrate the great diversity of our city. Thank you. Susan, we'll be making sure that you get this proclamation, and I'd like to see if there's anything you'd like to say tonight.
Yes, thank you. Yes, we'd love to receive it and put it up on our website. So, thank you for that. All right. Thank you to the City of Issaquah for this 2022 Pride Proclamation for recognizing that LGBTQIA+ citizens are still marginalized and discriminated against. I am speaking to you today as a mother of a transgender young adult son, a beautiful and generous citizen of our world. I'm also speaking to you as a founding board member of Eastside Pride. We are a new nonprofit organization with a mission to foster unity, celebrate diversity, and build bridges across communities. We want to educate, connect, and most of all, celebrate our LGBTQIA+ community. We often hear the hateful, demoralizing words spoken about the LGBTQIA+ community in the news. Eastside Pride wants to make sure the voices of support, love, and belonging are far louder. Thank you for your support, and we look forward to our continued collaboration with the City of Issaquah in making all LGBTQIA+ citizens feel welcome and respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you for joining us tonight. Councilmember Hall and I have really enjoyed working with Eastside Pride. You have a very engaged and excited and interesting group to work with, and you've been very helpful in having us think through our ways for it. So, thank you so much.
Most welcome. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda this evening, I'm going to move down to the podium, it is the Juneteenth Day Proclamation. This is item ID 1196. Thanks, Tisha. Tony, feel free to come up with me if you want. And do we have Shay here tonight?
Don't see her on my.
Okay, great. In case you have not met them, the Chair and Vice Chair of our Equity Board, Shay is unable to join us tonight. She is the Chair. She was hoping to join us virtually, and we have Vice Chair Tony Curry here with us in person this evening. He will be accepting the proclamation. Thank you, Tony. And the same, when I'm done with the proclamation, I'd love to offer you the microphone.
Thank you.
Whereas Juneteenth recognizes and commemorates the day of June 19, 1865, when enslaved African-Americans in Texas were informed by Major General Gordon Granger that they were free, ending 246 years of chattel slavery; and whereas on June 19, 1866, one year after Major Granger's announcement, the freed African-American men and women in the state of Texas held the First Juneteenth, or African-American Independence Day celebration; and Juneteenth celebrations would later spread to all corners of the country; and whereas we acknowledge the evils of slavery and its aftermath, and we acknowledge African-American contributions and achievements within this community, both past and present; and whereas during this Juneteenth event, we celebrate our African-American community members; and whereas we commit to working together toward equity for all in expanding economic, educational, and career opportunities for everyone in our community. Now therefore, I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2022, to be the first official Juneteenth Day celebration in the City of Issaquah. I encourage all residents to eliminate prejudice everywhere and join me in this celebration. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Thank you very much.
And thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
The mic is yours.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a quick few comments. This is so as, not as a member of the Equity Board, but as a member, as a, as a community member of Issaquah. This moment is very special to me, and I hope is special to everyone, whether regardless of race, creed, gender. This is an American holiday. It's a celebration. In my family, where I grew up in Los Angeles, California, where I learned about this day, it was a day to celebrate. It was a day that we, as American citizens, became a part of being whole. But it wasn't just about the 13th Amendment for us. It's about the 14th, which is, that's when we became American citizens. And it's all of it. We talk about, we look at the flag, and we say liberty and justice for all. That's why I love the month of June, not because it's just my birthday, but also because it's a great month. This is the month where we celebrate Pride Month. This is the month that we became a true United States of America. So, I invite, if you're a business owner, if you're a community, community, community member of this great Issaquah society, don't look at this as a day to celebrate this, it's the black people's holiday, or something like that. This is a holiday that belongs to everyone, every single United States citizen, regardless of race. This is the day that we can hand, not to our children, not to our children's children, but our children's children's children. So, we can say, this is the day we took a stand, and we're going to say, this is the United States of America. This is the day that we start having those conversations. We start learning about each other, and not just our differences and what makes us great, but what makes us whole. And so, thank you, Mayor Polly. Thank you, esteemed council. It's a great day. I love it.
I just love hanging around, Tony. Tony's amazing. Our Equity Board is doing a fabulous job, and I was notified that Shay has been able to join us virtually. So, I'd like to ask Shay if she would like to share some words with you today as well. Shay, would you like to join us?
I'd love to. Thank you, Mayor Polly. I appreciate it. And thank you for that beautiful proclamation. Thank you, Tony, for your words. Thank you, councilmembers, for joining us tonight. I just want to say that, much like Tony, I agree, it is an American holiday, and I'm so happy that we've decided to adopt it for our city, and we are willing to do the work to make this a great event for our citizens. I appreciate all of you participating and encouraging everyone to be a part of this kind of event. It's so important, not only for our city, but to demonstrate to other cities, other states, and even other countries, how we work together and how we do believe that everyone should have equal rights and feel important and feel welcome, especially in the City of Issaquah.
Shay, thank you so much, and thank you for all the amazing work you're doing for our community. This is a really nice way to start the meeting. I also have another proclamation that I added just based on local events and really feeling a need that our community and our council needed to say something. So, the last proclamation, which is not on tonight's agenda, but because we were unfortunate to have a recipient with us tonight, I'd like to issue this proclamation this evening. Mary Harris, who many of you have met, is representing a local chapter of Moms Demand Action, and she is joining us virtually tonight to accept this additional proclamation. It is on Gun Violence Awareness Day Proclamation. Thank you for being with us, Mary. Whereas every day, approximately 124 Americans are killed by gun violence, and there are over 45,000 homicides every year; and whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries; and whereas protecting public safety is the mayor's highest responsibility; and gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after significantly increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in gun violence across our country; and whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and to recognize her birthday in June, people across the United States have annually recognized the first Friday of June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day by wearing orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of these victims; and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our community safe. Now therefore, I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, did hereby proclaim that June 3, 2022, was going to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. And Mary, thank you so much for joining us tonight. This is a really difficult time in the country. It really is.
Thank you, Mayor Polly, and thank you, council, for continuing to support this very important topic. I've had the privilege of speaking with you before, and I unfortunately am here again today with that privilege to share with you this message that our nation continues to see unprecedented numbers of mass shootings that devastate communities and shake our sense of safety in America. In our local community, gun violence often takes a very personal toll in the form of suicide and domestic violence. In our schools, our children are aware that the threat of gun violence is real. We can all agree, the national toll of gun violence impacts our communities, and it's time to say enough. We must encourage our elected officials to focus on conversations surrounding responsible gun ownership. I welcome anyone who is interested in learning more about our local group of Moms Demand Action to reach out or text the word COMMIT to 64433 to find out more about how to volunteer, to get involved, and make an impact. Thank you very much for this honor and for the proclamation.
Thank you, Mary. I wonder if I could get you to just repeat your text message again. That was great.
The word COMMIT to 64433.
Thank you, and thank you for everything your team has been doing and working with the city to heighten awareness in this. Great work. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda this evening is Audience Comments, and members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first, and if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. This is, may be possible if you're on the phone by pressing star three, and if you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raised hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. There is also a public hearing tonight on AB 8331, the 2023 through 2028 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. Comments on this item must be made under the public hearing occurring later in the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicate a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. So, as a reminder, so for those making comments, please make sure to direct your comments at the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, unmute your microphone for virtual attendees, or step up to the lectern for in-person attendees. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address this this evening. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, Mark Clemmons. Mark, in just a moment here, I'll make you a panelist, and you should have the option to unmute and turn your video on if you so choose.
Can you guys see me?
Yes.
Okay.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, for the city's continued support of the Downtown Issaquah Association. I'd like to take the five minutes tonight just to highlight some of the recent hip happenings at DIA and end with an invitation. DIA's programs and events have brought thousands of additional foot traffic to the downtown community so far in 2022. The Design Committee has hung over 100 flower baskets beautifying front and sunset, and led a citywide cleanup with partners serving over 1,000 volunteer hours. The Economic Vitality Committee managed the installation of two parklets along Front Street. Everyone is invited to try out and answer a brief survey there. And the Promotional Committee has worked on a communications campaign that highlights the businesses and programs of the downtown regionally. The Outreach Committee has worked with over 100 visual and performance artists during DIA's programming to showcase their work. I leave each of you with an invitation. This Saturday evening during the Art Welcome Music Stroll from 6:00 to 7:30, DIA will be celebrating the Issaquah Valley Trolley Team volunteers at the historic Shell Station. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Nice to see you. City Clerk, is there anyone else signed up this evening?
Mayor, I don't see anyone else virtually indicating a desire to speak.
Is there anyone in the audience with us today who would like to speak? Okay. So, thank you very much, everyone. It was nice to hear from Mark at DIA about the happenings update and an invite for future events. As a reminder, at any point in time, written comments can be submitted to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. Council President Walsh, do you have any email comments received during the last couple of weeks that you would like to summarize on any of tonight's agenda topics?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one email that we received about 20 minutes ago, so I'm going to try and quickly summarize. One resident has concerns about two items on the consent agenda. That was related to the inter-local agreement for historic preservation, asking us to keep that close rather than give management away, I guess, and then also the use of the Costco parking lot for the farmer's market, concerned about the budgetary requirement of that. And that concludes comments we've received.
Thank you, Council President. We will move on to Committee Regional Reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May 10, the Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee met. We'll be having two items coming before the council this evening on the solid waste contract and the tip. May 20, the LTAC Committee met and went through the proposals for the LTAC funding, and that agenda bill is in the, in your packet under the consent agenda as well. May 24, Councilmember Hunt and Council President Walsh and I met with Representative Bill Ramos and Representative Lisa Callan to get a legislative update on the items that were in front of the legislature this last session and had a brief preview of some of the items that were coming this next session. May 25 was the Cascade Water Alliance meeting. The main item there was an agreement to allow a company to have a transmission easement over their Cascade Water property for a battery facility, and that will result in additional revenue to Cascade without having market, market impact on the operations at all. May 25, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council General Meeting. Two items of importance, there was an adoption of the Supplemental Budget and Work Program for 2022 and 2023. There was a regional transportation plan that was approved, and then there was a voice vote on the election of new officers for the Puget Sound Regional Council. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. On May 18, I attended the Regional Transit Committee meeting, and our Regional Transit Committee unanimously adopted the Metro Connects Report, which details possible funding sources to close the agency's projected funding gap over the next 30 years. The Sound Cities Association, as well as our city staff, are keeping close watch on Metro's funding proposals and how they might impact city taxing authority and our own capital finance planning. Metro's financial situation continues to be volatile with revenues coming in higher than projected and the addition of federal infrastructure funds. General Manager Terry White also announced that Metro's ridership is steadily increasing to pre-pandemic levels and is now approximately 200,000 riders per day. The Eastside Human Services Forum will meet this Thursday, and the Eastside Transportation Partnership has a scheduled meeting for this Friday, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee will meet tomorrow, June 7, and we have two items on our agenda, the Title 18, Zoning and Uses, which is our land use code, and then we have amendments to Title 16, Stormwater Manual and Flood Plains. On meetings that have happened over the last couple of weeks, on May 19, there was a meeting of the Wyre Eight Salmon Recovery Council. I wasn't able to attend, so I sent in my comments in advance, but the council approved $5.7 million in grant funding to habitat restoration projects for salmon and, as well as priority assessment activities and education and outreach. Council also approved funding to synthesize available data about predation impacts to juvenile salmon, which is an ongoing issue of concern. And the next meeting of the Wyre Eight Salmon Recovery Council will be July 21. Also having to do with salmon, on June 2, I attended a Lakes Mamish Artificial Light Abatement discussion, and this was a scoping discussion having to do with a budget proviso that was in the last legislature's budget for Lakes Mamish Artificial Light Abatement. Representative Ramos worked with a number of Wyre Eight Salmon Recovery Council representatives, as well as King Conservation District and the Kokoni Work Group, to have a budget proviso that would help pilot a project to reduce light pollution on Lakes Mamish, and hopefully this is the first step towards making a model ordinance and policy that could be useful across the state potentially, and certainly in other areas to reduce light pollution. So, I wanted to also thank Issaquah staff that attended, Doug Yormick and the Community Planning and Development Director, Minnie Dollywall, were there to talk about the code that we have been working on as part of Title 18, having to do with this light pollution issue, and that was very helpful. Then, on June 1, I attended the Regional Water Quality Committee meeting, and the main topic of conversation that I wanted to convey to my fellow councilmembers and mayor is having to do with a conversation that we had at our caucus meeting that we then carried into that meeting, which was about the Clean Water Plan. So, this is a King County water plan that will have a big impact on what wastewater projects go forward, and therefore ultimately on what the ratepayers see in terms of the rates. And the caucus put together a list of guiding principles, largely concerned with making sure that the scope is limited to wastewater, concerned about affordability, concerned also about the rates overall and affordability in this region, and another increasing rate for ratepayers, also about service levels and equity. And this guiding principles document will go to the PIC, Public Issues Committee, for Sound Cities Association, who we expect will weigh in on that, and that will, that is on the agenda for the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee for this week on Wednesday. So, the next meeting of the Regional Water Quality Committee will be on July 6, and then one other meeting to report out is that there will be a King Conservation District Advisory Committee meeting on June 14. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Councilmember Ray is not with us this evening. He has an excused absence. I'm going to move to Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, it's still a little bit more than two weeks away, but I just have to mention, the first Council Services Safety and Parks Committee meeting is going to be the day after our next council meeting. So, for those of you who have been patiently and excitedly waiting, the time is well nigh. It's going to be at 6:30 PM, Wednesday, June 22. That is a different date because of holiday schedule. That would normally occur. The agenda is still to be determined. Then, the PSRC GMPB met last Thursday from 10 till noon. Included in the conversation was a Regional Housing Strategy Implementation Discussion, discussion on the state housing support for local planning, and then a really interesting subregional housing group panel presentation, including AHA, SHAPE, ARCH, and Skip, which are all more, more recent or longer-standing subregional housing organizations. ARCH, of course, being the one that we're a member of, and Lindsay Masters talking about the long and rich history of ARCH. The other groups are a little bit more recent, but it was a, it was an interesting conversation about just how much is spooling up right now to try to address the enormous crushing housing challenges that we have as a region. Then, SCA PIC will meet next Wednesday from 7 till 9. It's going to be a virtual meeting. Included is the Clean Water Plan Guiding Principles, Future Actions. So, SCA has come up with draft principles for Clean Water Plan. I encourage everyone to take a look. What I'd like to do is, this is a potential future action, so there's a little bit of time, but I would ask my fellow councilmembers to look at pages 16 to 18 of the PIC packet. And at the next full council meeting, I will take a couple of minutes at the, for good of the order, to get feedback from you all that I can share with PIC. Then, there's also going to be a conversation about conservation futures ballot measure and King County utility rates, but no action planned on either of those. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Thanks for the heads up. Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you. A quick one this evening. Just to report that the next meeting of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors is this coming Thursday at 4 PM in person at our headquarters on Newport Way. Important agenda items include an update on Core Connect implementation in our service areas and a presentation on the recommendation of the new Fire Chief Selection Ad Hoc Committee. And I know you're all eagerly awaiting what the results of that are, so we'll be sure to update you all on new Fire Chief next steps after that board discussion, and we'll update you at the next council meeting. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Council President Walsh?
Thank you.
Thank you. The King County Affordable Housing Committee met on May 18th, and we continued our big conversation of, hey, how do we handle affordable housing in the community? We discussed and provided feedback on the Growth Management Planning Council's accountability framework. So basically, hey, you say you're going to build affordable housing, but maybe we should hold you accountable to actually doing so and having the code reflect what you say you're going to do. And then, the jurisdictional housing needs allocation. So right now, the state-level Department of Commerce says, hey, there's going to be this many people who move in, who, you know, need housing, and allocate that. This year, they're going to allocate it at the county level. There was a hope that they were going to allocate it smaller at the city level, but that's not going to happen, and it's going to come in late. And so, we have to not only take that and create the housing needs allocation for each of the cities, but then take that down and create the affordable housing needs allocation. So there's just a large conversation about whether that should be more allocated to areas that are already more naturally affordable, or whether it should be split up and have more affordable requirements for areas that haven't provided their fair share in the past. So that conversation will continue at our next meeting. And then tomorrow, City Administrator Bob Quitz and I will meet with the Issaquah School District Board Leadership and the Superintendent. The only item on our agenda for that meeting is to discuss the timing of the superintendent transition. We will obviously have an opportunity to say thank you to Superintendent Thiele, but we also are eager and excited to develop that new relationship. So understanding what those opportunities are will be our conversation tomorrow. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. The next item on the agenda this evening is the mayor's report. There will not be an executive session this evening. The City of Issaquah recently nominated Ryan Reamy for the 2022 Association of Washington City's Center for Quality Communities. That's a mouthful. Scholarship. So we are delighted to hear that Ryan was selected as a scholarship winner. Ryan is a member of the Issaquah Youth Advisory Board, and we hope to honor him at a future council meeting. Congratulations, Ryan, and thank you for your service to the City of Issaquah. The city recently purchased the 20-acre Squaw Mountain Estates Parcels for conservation and connectivity purposes. Small applause for the council. This is something pretty exciting. Squaw Mountain Estates is a wonderful addition to our protected public lands around Issaquah. By preserving riparian habitat from potential development and by becoming stewards of a key connector between the nearby state park and the downtown community, we continue to progress with our climate goals and making more of our natural environment accessible to folks in our community. We have a citywide performance dashboard. The City of Issaquah has launched its first citywide performance dashboard. In October of 2020, the city council adopted a set of measures aligned to the Our Issaquah Strategic Plan and intended to support elected officials, city staff, and community members in tracking progress toward the future vision outlined in the plan. Our performance measures provide key indicators of city health, strong infrastructure, economic and social, environmental and vitality. They should be viewed over the long term and will provide feedback on whether the actions we take on an annual and multi-year basis are improving the outcomes for all community members across our city. The dashboard is live now and on the city website. A little plug here for the Civil Service Commission. The city is looking to fill one current and one potential vacancy on the Civil Service Commission. Do you know anyone interested? Please encourage them to apply. The longstanding Civil Service Commission ensures that law enforcement officers are recruited through open competition, hired and promoted on the basis of merit, and are demoted, suspended, removed from office, or discharged only for cause. Qualified candidates must be a citizen of the United States, aged 18 years or older, an Issaquah resident for at least three years, and a registered voter in King County. The time commitment on this commission is an average of an hour a month currently. The vacant position currently open has a term that expires on April 30th of 2024. Applications will be accepted through June 17th at issaquahwa.gov/apply. And as we talked about earlier in the proclamation on Pride Month, each year, the month of June is designated as Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall Riots, which occurred in June of 1969, and generally recognizes the catalyst for the beginning of this movement. The city is hosting a virtual event called Honoring Pride Month on June 23rd at 6:30 PM. Hear from local professionals and members of the LGBTQIA+ community as we engage in a meaningful dialogue to help us shape a better future where everyone belongs and feels welcome. Registration is available through the city website. Regional partners are hosting additional events throughout the month, and if you'd like to know what they are, please visit the issaquahwa.gov/pride on our website for more event information. And Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Liberation Day, or Emancipation, is now an annual holiday observing the end of slavery in the United States and marks our country's second Independence Day. The city is hosting an evening of learning and reflection on June 20th at 5:00 PM at the Issaquah Senior Center. Food trucks will be available. Regional partners are hosting additional events throughout this month, and again, you can visit our website at issaquahwa.gov/juneteenth and get some additional event information. There's a couple of other upcoming community events. The State Parks is having a free pass day, June 11th and 12th, at Washington State Parks, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Department of National Resources. These free passes are in honor of National Get Outdoors Day and Free Fishing Day. These parks will also be free on June 19th for Juneteenth. And please save the date for the return of Issaquah's Down Home Fourth of July Celebration. The event will commence with the parade at 11:00 AM, and family fun activities will be available in Memorial Field until 2:00 PM. And the last is just to note that City Hall will be closed on June 20th for the Juneteenth holiday. That concludes the mayor's report. The next item of business we have this evening is the Consent Calendar, which was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the Consent Calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. City Clerk had one correction to one of the Consent Calendar items, and so I'll turn it over to Tisha to explain what that is.
Yes, just to put on the record that a correction was submitted to Consent Calendar Item B, the City Council Special Study Session Minutes of March 29th. The proposed revision was provided to the city council by email and is also included at your desks, making a slight change to the council feedback provided under Item C on the March 29th study session. With adoption of the Consent Calendar this evening, the revised version of the minutes would be approved.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Have the payables and payrolls been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you.
Yes.
Does any council member desire to remove any item from the Consent Calendar and consider it under regular business? Can I get someone to make a motion? Council President?
I'd like to move to approve the minutes as corrected.
Second?
Can we go further than that?
Yep.
I think we can go further.
You could move to approve the Consent Calendar.
Ah, yes.
As amended. Thank you. The Consent Calendar with the minutes as corrected.
That motion I'll second.
Okay. It's been made and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Did we get the wording right, City Clerk? Thanks. So hearing none, the motion before the council is to approve the Consent Calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Turn it. I hate that. Those opposed? That passes unanimously, six though. The next item of business this evening is our public hearing on AB 8331. It's the 2023 to 2028 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, and we will be conducting the public hearing this evening. I'd like to invite Transportation Engineer Manager John Mortenson to make a brief presentation. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm John Mortenson, Transportation Engineering Manager. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight to listen. I'm going to share my screen for my presentation. I'm John Mortenson, the Transportation Engineering Manager here at the City of Issaquah. Tonight, here to give you a brief presentation on the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. The purpose of this item is to hold a public hearing and adopt a six-year transportation improvement program. The RCW 35.77.010 requires that cities like the City of Issaquah hold a public hearing and adopt a transportation improvement program. Little background on the Transportation Improvement Program. It is a subset of the Capital Improvement Plan. The Capital Improvement Plan is adopted by council every other year, so it's adopted on odd years, and the Transportation Improvement Program is adopted every year as required by state law. A lot of the decisions that go into the Transportation Improvement Program come from a variety of things, but real guiding criteria for us is the Mobility Master Plan and applying the guiding principles in the Mobility Master Plan, as well as looking at what are the potential funding sources. We've got a list of projects that we do want to get done, but sometimes when we put together the tip, we have to look at what are the funding sources because we need to bring in external money, and a lot of times, our funding partners are looking for something very specific. And this is a little chart or picture that was put together for the Capital Improvement Plan. I really like how it shows how the Transportation Improvement Program fits in related to the city's various plans, including the comprehensive plan, the capital improvement plan, and the different things like the Park Strategic Plan, Issaquah Climate Action Plan. You can see the list on there. But as you can see from this picture, the tip or the Transportation Improvement Program is one small component of a lot of the stuff that we're trying to do here at the City of Issaquah. Background on this item since the Capital Improvement Plan was adopted by the council last spring. Last summer, the administration worked with the Transportation Advisory Board to look at some of our project descriptions and start making some revisions to some of those projects to incorporate the guiding principles in the Mobility Master Plan. Then, at the Transportation Advisory Board meeting in February, we met with the TAB to confirm that we got the feedback right before starting to assemble the Transportation Improvement Program. In April, met with the Environmental Board to get the feedback from the Environmental Board about how it impacted the natural environment. On May 10th, met with the New Mobility and Infrastructure Committee here in this room, and then last month, at the May Transportation Advisory Board, gave the TAB an update on where the TIP was at. They're very interested in it. Tonight is June 6th, where we're holding a public hearing with a scheduled adoption of the tip on June 21st. At the, some of the feedback from the Transportation Advisory Board is they had some concern about roadway widening projects that are in future years. Those are projects that are part of the city's current concurrency system and required to meet the city's level of service with future growth, and so that's why those projects are in there. The, another feedback from the Transportation Advisory Board is they would like to meet with the Environmental Board and begin talking about how to integrate the Mobility Master Plan and the Issaquah Climate Action Plan a little bit better, since the Issaquah Climate Action Plan's recently adopted, and the TAB would really like to have some feedback in the TIP that will be put forth the council in a year. When we met with the Environmental Board, some of the feedback that we got from the Environmental Board were just questions about the project selection and prioritization, wanting to know about the impacts to the natural environment. The Environmental Board is interested in having information on greenhouse gas emissions generated by projects. They would really like to see promotion of alternative modes of transportation and to consider wildlife corridors when planning and designing transportation projects. The Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, some of the feedback that we received were comments on the timing and process that felt a little bit rushed with where we're trying to get it done before our state deadline. Some of the same concerns about future years projects with roadway widening, the projects that are tied to the city's concurrency system. They talked about the Capital Finance Implementation Plan, which will be coming forward to the council at a future meeting, and talked a little bit about the project to create a new crossing inside of the Regional Growth Center, which we're calling the Central Issaquah Multimodal Crossing Project. When we look at the different types of projects that go into the tip, I really like to just break them into little buckets or categories to help me think about what we're trying to do for mobility and transportation. There's the annual projects. Those are the projects that we do every year. Projects that are underway that began before the Mobility Master Plan, and we're continuing to execute those projects. Mandated projects, which are projects that are needed for asset maintenance or safety, those kind of projects. New priority projects where we're really trying to apply the guiding principles in the Mobility Master Plan, and then long-term projects, ones that, for various reasons, are on the Transportation Improvement Program, but they're not in the next six years, but they're ones that we would like to get done in the future. Some of the projects that are in the Transportation Improvement Program in the category of projects underway are the two projects on Newport Way. The first one is between SR 900 and 54th. It's a project that will build bicycle and pedestrian facilities, a new shared-use path that will be part of the Mountains to Sound Greenway corridor that will eventually go from Seattle through Mercer Island to Bellevue, Issaquah, and keep going towards the mountains and further, as well as some safety improvements, trying to reduce speed on Newport Way. This was a project that came as a result, or this really became a really high-priority project after a fatality at a crosswalk in 2015. The Newport Way Maple to Sunset Project is another project on Newport Way, this time between Maple and Sunset, which is, it'll construct new pedestrian and bicycle facilities, roundabouts at three intersections, which would be Dogwood, Holly, and Juniper, as well as constructing a second southbound lane from Maple to 900 feet south of Holly. The Northwest Sammish Road Non-Motorized Project, which is a project when we did the Capital Improvement Plan last year, really rose to the top as a huge priority for the community. We're in the design process right now and working on coming up with the design to connect the neighborhood south of Lake Sammish to the Lake Sammish State Park, and the Highlands Signal Pole Painting Project is the final project in the underway category. For the annual projects, these are projects we work on every year. They're part of a program. The ADA Improvements Project is one of them where we will do different improvements inside the public right-of-way to make, to remove barriers and make our transportation system work for users with disabilities. That could be constructing curb ramps or installing new pedestrian push buttons that signals. If you're at a new traffic signal, not an old one, and you see the pedestrian push button, if you push and hold it for about three seconds, it'll start talking to you. It'll tell you to wait, and then it'll tell you when the walk sign's on to cross to help pedestrians who are visually impaired be able to cross, something that we work on. The pavement management program where the city, as well as the annual concrete maintenance program, the city takes care of the streets and the pavement and the concrete. That's an annual project. And the recent strategic small capital project where we make small improvements to the mobility system to try and help people get to places. This is a project that came out of the strategic small capital project where we make small improvements This is a project that came out of the strategic plan where we identified a need to make small improvements that could make a big difference in the community. For the mandated responsibilities, a lot of those are the annual projects, but other ones that we have are looking at when we need to replace the Black Nugget Retaining Mall, as well as various landslide repair projects that we have. And when we look at bridges that need to be either replaced or rehabilitated, that -- those fit under the bucket of mandated responsibilities. And then the last project is -- or the last category is the new priority project, and the only project we have in this category is the Central Issaquah Multimodal Crossing of I-90. The recommendation is to approve the resolution adopting the 2023 through 2028 Transportation Improvement Program as proposed at the regular council meeting on June 21st. For timing and next steps, tonight is the public hearing where the public will be able to provide feedback on the Transportation Improvement Program. Scheduled adoption on June 21st. Then once the TIP is adopted, between then and when we work on the Capital Improvement Plan, to work with the boards and commissions to incorporate the Issaquah Climate Action Plan into the next Capital Improvement Plan update, as well as to incorporate equity into how we prioritize our projects here at the City of Issaquah. And next spring is when the city will be updating the big six-year Capital Improvement Plan, including the Transportation Improvement Program. Does the council have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Before we go to questions, I'm just going to go over to Chair Joe, who is the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee Chair, and see if there were any other comments you wanted to provide about the committee work or if John covered it. So floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Mr. Mortensen. Thank you for all of your hard work, and I know that you went to our committee and then went on to a number of other means to make sure that our boards and commissions were keyed into what we were doing. And also, the board, the Transportation Board, expressed a desire to learn more about the TIP and be connected with the council a little bit more as we're looking at that project in the future. I thought that was a good feedback from that board, and I hope that we were able to do that and make that connection in the future. The only question I had, I guess in general, the committee looked at this and is not recommending any changes to it, but could you talk a little bit about the board, the bridge improvements that's going to be done and why we're looking at the load on that particular old bridge?
Yes, that is -- thank you for that question, Councilmember Joe. That is the bridge on Gilman that crosses Issaquah Creek. As part of the 2022 work plan, we did some evaluation on that bridge and determined that it does not meet the current seismic criteria and that it also needs to be load-rated for heavy emergency vehicles. And as a result of that, we have applied for a grant with the Washington Department of Transportation to do a seismic upgrade, which would also take care of the load rating for the Gilman Bridge. And so it's a project originally, we're looking at it thinking that we'd be able to -- wanting to seismic upgrade, and I should add that it's not a bridge replacement project. It is a project that would rehabilitate the existing bridge. This bridge is pretty neat. It was designed by -- I can't remember his first name, but the last name's Lacy, and if you're driving to Seattle on I-90, the bridge that you drive over is named after the engineer who designed this bridge here in Issaquah. He worked for the Washington Department of Transportation, and so I think it's got a really neat history. I believe it's the oldest bridge in the City of Issaquah, and I think it'll be an exciting project to get to. Hopefully, we get the funding to be able to rehabilitate that, remove the load limit, and have it meet the current seismic criteria.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Glad that we're looking at the way our system works in the event of an earthquake or other natural disaster, so we can make sure that our first responders are able to get to the victims and the people that need help. We want to make sure those bridges are up and running as much as possible, so do appreciate that look at that project. That really concludes the report back from the committee. I know that other council members on that committee may have other comments. Barb D. Michelle and, you know, what's your name?
Councilmember Hall.
Zach Hall. We're both very instrumental in the conversation that we had on the 10th, and if they have anything to add as well, we'll certainly open that up to their comments. Thank you.
A little humor is good. Any other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Mertz?
The engineer in me always is interested to hear when things don't meet standards or specifications. I note that the signs at that bridge say weight limit, but doesn't say what the weight limit is. Do we currently have a weight limit on that bridge, different than what it is on Gilman, and should we have signage to that effect? It seems a bit mysterious that it says weight limit, but it doesn't have a specific number.
Don?
Well, when I saw the signs that were supposed to go up, they did have a number, so what I'm going to do is on my way home afterwards, I'm going to drive over the bridge and take a look. Thank you for that.
Small town, yes.
There we go.
Thank you, John. That's awesome. Other questions? Council President?
I've got a few. Do you want me to go down?
No, go through all your questions. Okay. Well, one at a time, we'll have John answer, but we'll get through all your questions.
So I noted in the memo that TR 041, the Front Street Streetscape, and TR 042, the Elder Festival Street. It's listed as basically pushed off beyond the six-year time period because you've said that you won't have the necessary staff. And I'm trying to understand from a policy perspective and the budgeting authority, how that decision comes out at a staff level versus coming to us and saying, "We know that this was on your previous priorities list. We don't think we're going to have the staff. Should we leave it in there because we're going to adjust the budget?" I'm just -- I'm having a hard time understanding how that was decided and how that fell off versus, say, other projects that also obviously would require staff.
Good question, and one of the things that we're really trying to -- when we put together a plan for the council, we're really trying to look -- do a better job of looking at what we can realistically do and getting that done. Now, ultimately, as members of the council, you guys set the budget, and then we respond to it. This is what's proposed in the six-year TIP that when we look at what we're trying to get done. I would add for the Two Streets Street projects, there is a current project that is underway that will continue. We're not stopping the current work. The future -- the work, and I can't remember if it was in '23 or '24, it wasn't funded in the CIP. It was something that we put in because last year, we put into the CIP and TIP because we knew that we had some momentum going based on the streetery and the project that we're working on. And so as we looked at the work plan and we looked at our priorities, we prioritize keeping the projects that are underway, projects that would be good for existing funding, although I will say at the end of the day, it's you as members of the council who get to make that decision, not me.
Can I add to that, John, as well? Since I kind of gave a directive out to staff as well. We're really working hard to true-up what we can do with the number of staff that we have, so that we are not over-promising and under-delivering. But if you approve the TIP, if you have the option in the budget, the TIP, first year of the TIP is what we're going to propose in the budget, you have the option to ask to do it differently. That's where you can say, as a council, make a recommendation that you want to add these things back in and tell us what it will cost, so we can consider adding it back in. So I've asked them to be extremely cautious this year in making sure there are hiring shortages, engineers are hard to get, almost everything is hard to get. So this is what we realistically can afford to do, but you can change these projects. You can do it during your budget session, so depending on the value to you.
I appreciate both of those answers and the looking toward being accurate and not over-promising and under-delivering. That's never a fun place to be. So the next two questions, you know, I'm always going to ask you about the concrete management program and the pavement management program. They are areas dear to my heart, we should not build before we are able to maintain. So with the pavement management program, I know we had two fairly large projects in the last year that did not get appreciated very much from the community in how they were ultimately delivered. And so I'm wondering if the administration, in proposing this level of budget, has taken into account what we learned from some of those difficult projects in the last year that didn't deliver toward, I think, what we had expected them to? And so have we learned from them? Have we -- do we have a plan to modify our work, and is the funding allocated according to that idea?
I was going to switch over to the city administrator, because I think you're referring to the product fail that happened last year in several areas, and we don't have Bennett with us tonight. So, Wally, you want to take a stab at it?
Sure. Madam Mayor, members of the council, council president. As I think John has alluded to, certainly the last 12 months, 18 months have been very difficult on lots of levels. Getting good product as far as the pavement has been an issue, having the firms that are the lowest responsible bidder have appropriate staff to do that, those have all been challenged. So we're also challenged by the staff we have to go through the process of bidding the projects and managing the projects. As you know, the council allocated additional staff resources in the 2022 budget to help us with this specific issue, to have an additional inspector help with these projects and help Mr. Ashbaugh with the management of that. So I think we're being as proactive as we can. With that said, there are still staffing shortages within the city's Public Works Department. There are still staffing shortages within the private businesses we're doing, and I think we'll have to wait and see about the quality of the asphalt product, because certainly it was inferior in some of the cases, not all the cases, but certainly some of the cases. So we'll continue to be as aggressive as we can. We want to make sure we have, again, appropriate city staff. The turnover in our Public Works Department continues to be significant. We've had two resignations just in the last three days of people who would be these people working with contractors on these projects, because in one case, they decided they want to move away and do something completely different with their life. In other case, they said, "Job's too hard. I'm going to go back to a job that's easier and pays me more money." So those are just realistic things that we're facing. We're going to continue to be aggressive in the allocation of dollars. If we can put additional staffing toward this, we will. There's lots of staffing needs, I think, citywide as we look at '23, '24. So we'll continue to be mindful. We understand the council's priority in this area, but there are just some realistic factors, some of which are beyond our control.
Thank you, city administrator.
And then toward the concrete management program, one of the things I really like about the pavement management program is we have a sense of, hey, if we fund it at this level, we're looking at maintaining our roads for a 25-year period or 40-year period. We took it down from a 70-year period, which was untenable. I don't have a sense with the concrete management program what the scope of our need is and whether we are addressing that need with kind of what is proposed here. Do we have a sense of that, or is there a plan to establish a sense of how much needs to be replaced, how much needs to be maintained?
Council President Walsh, that's another really good question. The concrete management program is managed by Bennett Ashbaugh. He's not here tonight, and I'd like to offer up to have him write you an email and answer your question.
But I can do you one better and answer it now, if you'd like, Council President. Back to the last response. We're trying to balance the amount of money that we're requesting for the council with the realistic expectation that there are private contractors to help with this and that there are city staff to manage it. So we will continue to fund this at the highest level we think is appropriate with those conditions. We will never be where you want us to be, because we do not have the resources to do that. And if the council decides it's going to cease any additional capital projects citywide in order to put money toward pavement management, we still couldn't do it, because we wouldn't have enough staff and there wouldn't be enough companies out there with the asphalt to do it. So we're going to continue to be as aggressive as we can, again, with those constraints. As those constraints change, as city staff come on board and have some tenure, if the asphalt industry loosens itself up, there was a concrete strike certainly that has some impacts, maybe perhaps not directly, but certainly indirectly. A lot of projects I see around Issaquah that should have had concrete have asphalt on them instead. So we're going to continue to be vigilant with this, but it's not going to be what you want it to be.
May I add something, Council President? Several years ago, when Bennett came on, he did do an assessment of the concrete needs in the city, and it is lengthy, based on the age of our city. So maybe it is appropriate that we get him to also just put something in a memo out to council that talks about the concrete program, just to let you know where we are. But I think some of the workforce realities and market realities that the city administrator is talking about are really where we're going to get stopped. But yeah, let's get him to write something for you all.
Okay. I appreciate all of the perspective on all of that and understanding that we are being aggressive toward those ideas, toward what we can. I think the rest of the stuff that I have is mostly comments, so I will see if anybody else has questions.
Councilmember Mertz?
I would just -- I would just plus one on getting -- trying to get a sense of the magnitude of the challenge, because one of the things, as you know better than I, is our ongoing conversations about managing growth in the region. Infrastructure issues come up, and understanding where the gap is on concrete can help us talk intelligently with other regional leaders about what's missing in infrastructure to support that growth. Thanks.
Great point. Other questions? There's a couple councilmembers who haven't asked questions yet, and if not, do you want to go to the public then for public comment? Okay. I am now opening the public hearing at 8:08 PM, and if you are -- if you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand, and if you're on the phone, please press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers as well before closing this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Mayor, no one has signed up in advance to make comments under the public hearing. Mark Clemmons, I see your hand is raised, but I believe it's a carryover from earlier. I'm going to unmute you briefly in case you wish to make comments again. Mark, are you interested in making comments on the TIP? Okay, I see he has lowered his hand, so I don't see that any virtual attendees are wishing to make comments.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening wishing to make comments in person? So if there is no objection, I would like to close the public hearing. The hearing, hearing none. The public hearing is closed at 8:10 PM, and the item is scheduled to come back before city council for approval at the June 21st, 2022 council meeting. And I'm just going to check in with the city clerk. If there are councilmembers that have comments, is this appropriate moment in time to make it?
Mayor, I don't see why you couldn't allow some general comments. I'll also mention there is a proposed alternative to proceed with approval of the resolution tonight as well.
Thank you. So let's go to comments. I know at least council president has some comments.
Okay, thank you. I have some comments on this item. The first thing, I do appreciate that the staff have taken an approach that factors in the staff capacity and that there are some very real challenges with that. I think having a more accurate view of what we can do will ultimately be helpful, even if there are some instances where it's disappointing compared to the way the TIP has been presented in previous in previous years. Visually, it's much more useful for us to have a realistic representation, so I appreciate that. And I also, like I said, appreciate that there are some very real staffing and staff capacity challenges right now. I would ask my council colleagues to consider requesting the administration to make a change on the TIP, and that is with regards to the Squawk Mountain Multimodal Improvements Study, which has been put on future projects list for $200,000 currently. This is a project that has been on our radar on various plans for a long time. From, I went back and reviewed the letter that the council approved that accompanied the CIP and TIP last year that was, the purpose of writing a letter with the CIP and TIP last year was that we would potentially revisit that and then start from a similar spot in our conversation. Also, there's new councilmembers over time, and this is a process that continues year after year, and so it's good to have that continuity and that documentation of our last conversation. So, I did go back and look at that, and this project is there, and it's part of our many projects. It's been on our list for many different lists over time. I wanted to also comment on that this, we did receive an email comment specifically about this project and wanting to, wanting to speed up the timeline or put a timeline on it. And the council president responded to that within part that the Squawk Mountain Multimodal Improvements Project was placed in the future years section of the TIP because updates to the TIP in even years are minor. Major changes to the TIP are done in odd years when the capital improvement plan, CIP, is also updated. I think we have some evidence that we can make a change. We also had the council president's questions earlier about the budget implications and what we would need to do if we wanted to make a change. But there's also a $9 million move reflected in this, in this TIP compared to last year's TIP, which has to do with TR 003, the Central Issaquah Multimodal I-90 Crossing. And basically, we prioritize that project, and we've moved $9 million up the timeline for that project. So, I do believe we can do that, and it's not, there's not a reason we couldn't. We just need to take that step and prioritize. This is a longstanding issue with putting off needed improvements to older neighborhoods. In March 2021, the city adopted the Master Mobility Plan. This has established project prioritization criteria. It was referenced in the comments earlier, and the projects were sorted into tables. The Squawk Mountain Uphill Bike Lane and Sidewalk Project was ranked in the highest priority category. So, this was adopted last year before the CIP and TIP last year, and it's singled out, and it's been singled out by community members over time. I worry that just because we aren't hearing anymore about it, it's because it's been on the walk and roll plan since 2014, and people are maybe feeling like they're not getting their point across, but we've certainly heard about it a lot over time. And it's a really important project for this neighborhood to establish connectivity where there really isn't a lot of sidewalk or connectivity because it is an older neighborhood. And it, I think, you know, we need to prioritize it to make it happen. And then I just wanted to read a few things to reestablish where we were on this conversation last time around from that letter that I referenced earlier. Master Mobility Plan identified both Newport Way SR 900 to the 12th Avenue Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements Project and Squawk Mountain Uphill Bike Lane Sidewalk Project as highest priorities. Because the Newport Way project at that time identified a funding source, it was included in the CIP, and the Squawk Mountain project was not. Longstanding community priorities that do not have identified funding, funding become deprioritized. The last two CIPs, the council has deliberated on and ultimately recommended elevating such projects. CIP, this applied last time to the SR, the Southeast 43rd Way signal, and it applies in that last year's CIP to the Northwest Mammoth Road Non-Motorized Improvement Project. So, I would like to ask my colleagues to consider elevating this Squawk Mountain Sidewalk Study. It's $200,000. It's currently in future projects, which I think sends the wrong message that it's still more than six years out, and I would like to see it put on a timeline that indicates to the community that we are taking it seriously. I also think we have evidence from our boards and commissions that they would like us to align the CIP with the Master Mobility Plan. Again, this is signaled out by the Master Mobility Plan, and again, in the letter from last year, we had the same kind of comments from our boards and commissions. It's very similar to the comments that were from the boards and commissions this year. So, I would ask my colleagues again to put a timeline on this, and let's elevate it and show the community that we are serious about doing the study and ultimately doing this project for this neighborhood.
Thanks. Other questions, comments? Council president?
Thank you. Much of what I have to say echoes, I think, some of the things that we've heard from councilmember Hunt. I think it was really useful. I continue to be impressed with the environmental board and their engagement on topics. We asked them, "Hey, get involved. You know, your voice should have importance in these conversations." And man, reading over the environmental board letter and also the Transportation Advisory Board tab letter, I really think they picked out the things that are missing or were kind of pushed off and said, "Hey, wait a second, guys. That's not the way we want to go as a direction." So, my, my thoughts are similarly, the Squawk Mountain Uphill Bike Lane and Sidewalk Project, there were several of their smaller bike lanes and shared use paths, and then also the tab letter referenced the tier one and tier two sidewalk gaps. I think are all very important projects, and toward that end, I, I think those are the types of things that we need to be prioritizing based on the Master Mobility Plan, based on the environmental board's review, and our movement on the ICAP. So, I would also be in support of looking at the Squawk Mountain Uphill Bike Lane Sidewalk, and then potentially the tier one, tier two sidewalk gaps. I'm also very, very interested, I know there was this conversation about, okay, this is a off-year, but I'm very interested in taking the time to work with the boards to align the TIP with the Master Mobility Plan, with our ICAP Climate Action Plan. And I don't know if we need to throw the baby out with the bathwater to kind of restart and refresh, but I do think we need to have a commitment from the administration that we're gonna have a clear sense of how the projects are decided on based on those plans and priorities so that we aren't, again, looking at this this year and, or next year and saying, "Oh, well, we just didn't have the time to make those adjustments." And I am really understanding of the, the staff limitations, but it is my job and responsibility to bring that up, representing the community as, "Hey, these are the important things for us." So, I would say Squawk Mountain Uphill Bike Lane, tier one, tier two sidewalk gaps, and then really asking the administration to make sure we have a clear timeline for realigning the TIP with our plans next year.
So, thank you for that. Are there any other comments? I have some comments, and I think the city administrator has some information to provide. Any other comments? Councilmember Doe.
Thank you. I'll also speak in favor of moving up the Squawk Mountain project. I live on Squawk Mountain, but I'm on the very low elevation side of Squawk Mountain where I already have sidewalks, but I see people going up and down that hill with young kids in strollers and with their dogs all the time, and I hope we could make it more accessible for people to get back downtown and enjoy the things that make Issaquah special. I'll just speak briefly on the intermodal project, TR 003, Central Issaquah Multimodal I-90 Crossing. Just wanted to point out that we're using ARPA funds to do the study for this and try to figure out whether or not we can make a overpass that also serves as a good terminus point for sound transit when they come in 2043, or four, or five, or whatever the date might be, right? And I just want to compliment the administration for using those funds for a long-term project that will help connect sound transit to our city in a healthy and very smooth way because we have seen projects for sound transit that have been thrust upon cities that didn't work with what the city vision was. I just hope that we're able to use these funds as a start to get the vision that Issaquah would like to see for that crossing and the potential terminus point for, for sound transit so that we can integrate affordable housing, housing choices there that enable people to take advantage of not having a car, and then we put electric vehicle infrastructure in there as part of that as well and kind of look toward the future down the road. So, I just, again, want to compliment the administration for finding a way to use those ARPA funds in a creative way that looks toward the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, sorry, councilmember Mertz, followed by deputy council president Hall.
So, I'm a little confused about, there's a request around the study on Squawk Mountain, and then there's a different request on actually getting going. And so, I think we may be talking about two different things. I mean, I think it may come from the same spirit. You know, I think about my friend Jan Rittenhouse, former councilmember John Rittenhouse's wife, who walks from her house on Mount Olympus down to the, down to the library where she works every day, and how nice it would be to have proper sidewalks to cover that, much less for all the folks who walk recreationally. So, in that spirit, I would certainly love to at least see the study money, and then again, maybe get clarity on, on the levers that could be pulled. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy council president Hall.
You know, I was just confused too about next steps with this then be something that could be an alternate motion for us at the next city council regular meeting, or how are we envisioning this coming back to council?
That's a great question. That's something, I was gonna add a few comments and then invite the city administrator to join the conversation.
Perfect. I would rather listen to his comments before mine then.
Okay, great. It, when Wally answers, that doesn't mean we're done. You can, it could generate more questions. So, a couple of things here. You know, the study money is the most important because it gives us the scope and scale of what to put in those outer years. So, what we're hearing loud and clear is if you get the study done and you've got a project, get it in there. I mean, I think that's been heard. I think it's disappointing for the boards and commissions that there wasn't enough staff capacity this year to go through that thorough exercise of, you know, taking this TIP/CIP and putting it through the rigors to get to the MMP. It's not because the staff didn't want to do it. It's not because they deprioritized it. It's just because it wasn't on the work plan for them to do. So, we've heard loud and clear that we're going through a major CIP cycle, and we gotta do it. So, I think that message is received. Thank you for that. The process, I was gonna hand over to city administrator to discuss because I'm not sure what it means to make a recommendation to revise it at this point in time when it's already gone through different council committees, it's had its public hearing, does it need another public hearing, does it need another committee touch? And so, I was gonna turn that over to the city administrator and see if he can walk us through that.
Thank you, madam mayor, members of the council. We're still new coming back to the committee process. I think from a staff's perspective, we thought that the committee time was the time to have this discussion. Obviously, full council has prerogative to raise issues. Normally, it doesn't happen at a public hearing. There was normally just the public input, and then we close it and bring it back. But again, I don't think there's any, certainly no harm to the discussion this evening. I think what we'll need to do is come back, and if the council's comfortable without sending this back to committee, we can look and see what adjustments need to be made. I think there's a focus on the one project. I don't think that's a very big deal to deal with. But again, we're trying to sort through this with the committee process, with the board and commission process, so this is all, we're still all new to this, so we'll, we'll sort through that. I think the other question, which is not directly applicable, but certainly related, and that is, what are we gonna do different next time? We have not only transportation projects, but all capital projects that I think we're hearing from the council you'd like a different viewpoint to. And you put on top of that the six months that your capital financing task force did and the information they have, plus the money we're getting from ARPA. The mayor's preparing to come to the council at the end of June with recommendations, so there's a lot of capital project questions up in the air. So, we're gonna have to look again at staffing resources and come back to the council and propose additional resources to sort through all this the way I think I'm hearing you wanted to sort through this, that the, in addition to the ARPA money, in addition to whatever fund balances, if the council wishes to take a fresh look, great, well, we're happy to do that, but we currently don't have the resources, staff resources, to do that. So, we'll figure that out and, and come back to you as part of the budget plan. So, it's a long answer to a relatively short question, madam mayor.
It's coming back for the vote next?
Again, the plan was that the, was the public hearing, we're gonna close the public hearing. I think there was perhaps an alternate motion if the council wanted to take action this evening, but
They don't.
Certainly, we can come back on the 21st, and I guess I would just ask the council, are you comfortable with the administration making an adjustment without it going back to committee?
Or public hearing?
The public hearing part, I think we've, we've satisfied that.
Can't reopen it.
I think we've satisfied the public hearing piece. I think it's within the council's jurisdiction to make an adjustment after the public hearing as long as we've had it, and as long as John's not waving his arms.
He waved his arm.
The city attorney's also on the line.
Oh, great.
Phone a friend if we need.
Yeah, this might be a good question for the city attorney, but I do remember two years ago wanting to make a last-minute adjustment to crack something up, and I was told that we needed a public hearing for that. So, I don't know if I had right information, but what I remember is that to change it, we would need to do a public hearing, but I defer to the city attorney as an alternative, and I'd be certainly happy to revise the tip as an alternative. We could have direction to not include it in the TIP, but to include it in the budget that's going to be put together because that's really, the TIP, it's a planning document. What really matters is what gets put in the operating budget.
That's very true. City attorney Turpin, do you have a observation comment?
Yes, thank you. Tonight's public hearing satisfied the public hearing requirement. The whole purpose of the public hearing is to obtain feedback and have that discussion, and then the council is free to make changes after that without another public hearing being necessary.
So, it sounds like we have a plan. It sounds, there's a couple of options. It can come back amended. It can come back as it was submitted tonight, but there can be a recommendation in the motion, a direction from council that this is how they want the first year put back into the, put into the proposed budget this year. Is there any other questions on that? Well, great. Thank you for all of the comments, and thank you, John. The next item under regular business, and I'm doing a time check here, it's 8:30. AB 8220, a solid waste contract, and the request before the council this evening is to authorize the contract. I'd like to invite utilities engineering manager Gary Shimick and consultant Jeff Brown to make a brief presentation. Welcome, Gary.
Good evening. Thank you, madam mayor and council. I'm just gonna share my screen and then get started. Good evening. Again, I am your Utilities Engineering and Environmental Programs Division Manager, Gary Shimick. Very excited to be here tonight to present the 2023-24 Solid Waste Collection Contract to y'all.
There's just a little gray block on the screen, and we're all kind of freaking out about it.
Oh. It's, it's, on mine, it's live. I can see myself. Is there, maybe I can hide video view.
Oop, somebody just made it bigger.
Is that better?
It shrank. I think we can see all the information, so it's probably fine to go ahead.
Let me just try one more thing here. No, that doesn't work.
Oop, there's the big one.
Okay.
That's good enough. Thank you, Gary.
So, I'll have to tell my kids I was able to solve a technology problem real time. So, thank you again. Purpose for tonight. Administration is requesting city council authorization for the mayor to execute the city's 12-year solid waste contract with the highest-rated proponent, Recology. the highest rated proponent, Recology. Oops, there we go. Alternatives to that recommendation. Add or delete a specific request for proposal that we've seen at previous meetings. Alternatives of, so previous RFP alternatives and authorize a final contract with Recology without coming back. You could direct the administration to negotiate contract changes with Recology and then again come back. Or finally, direct administration to begin discussions with one of the other vendors, Republic or Waste Management. So before we get into the background, I just wanted to let you know, we did have one error that was caught by Councilmember Joe, grammatical error on page 47 of the contract. We were trying to say custom tailored outreach programs, and we said custom tailors. So thank you, but that has been corrected and that will be in the final contract. So I appreciate that. So the 26th of April, we presented the contract at a study session. Council requested that we go to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee meeting on May 10. And we did such. And council committee approved that we move forward to today's meeting for approval at a three to zero vote. So the next few slides are just highlights of what we shared at the committee, but also some of this information was prepared at, presented at the council session as well. This information was also in the staff report. So in terms of electric vehicles, we have one electric collection truck that's in the current contract and will be rolling out in the next few months. And we'll keep council up to date on that. But that's a current contract piece that did come out of our negotiations. All electric support fields will be at the start of the new contract, July 1, 2023. By the end of 2025, we'll have two more electric collection vehicles on the streets. But stepping back a little bit from that, we will be working closely with Recology by June of 2024 to develop, to develop that plan to the phase in of further electric vehicles. So what we're gonna, you know, see, and why there's that difference in the date is, is the, as I think, city administrator and mayor mentioned, supply chain issues and such, that there, that needs to be that lead in time. So we'll be coming to you with that information soon after June 24 as a precursor of what would be coming up in 2025. Inclement weather. So the new policy is more robust than what we have in the current contract. Just a couple of examples here. If missed collection due to snow, then double materials will be picked up the following week. Community collection site for both garbage and recycling, if more than four consecutive days of non-service. And one addition that we have here that will be outside of the contract that came up at the committee meeting, again, gonna call out Councilmember Joe, he asked us to work with Recology staff this year to identify what those sites may be. There'll be one site, but we may have multiple locations depending on where the issues are. So we're gonna work with Recology before the next winter season and have those sites identified and report back during our annual report to council on that. And then if two weeks in a row are missed, then-
Gary, is it okay if we take a question during the presentation?
Oh, absolutely.
Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you. So following a winter weather event, double, double, what's the word?
A double pickup, double collection, double, double volume.
Yeah, how does, how does that work for those of us who live in bear country? We only have one, we only have one bear-proof garbage container. And if you put more garbage out, the bears just take it. They're, they're very good at it at this point.
That is a great point. I think we have our, I'm gonna, gonna call virtually on our consultant Jeff Brown to see if he has thought on that, or we have Recology here as well.
Well, I don't know that I've heard of that happening, but I think you would basically default back to the, put the garbage out in the morning when you know the truck's coming, not overnight, and take your containers right back. I don't know what else you would want to do. I think if you were particularly concerned with a repetitive bear event, again, the drop-off sites would offer an out for that. But I think that's probably operationally what you would do. But I would turn that over to Recology if they had something else.
Would either of you like to add a, add a comment to what Jeff has? Thank you. This is Anthony from Recology. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Good morning, or good afternoon. Anthony Brocato, General Manager of Recology, King County. I mean, I think Jeff somewhat hit it right on the point. I think, one, just working with our customer service team and communicating those concerns. We could certainly make a concerted effort if it seemed like there was gonna be more volume, there'd be a challenge, if there was gonna be a little bit of a holdover. But also, our collection sites as well would be, would be the next best option.
And is there normally a fee that would be foregone in that situation? And, and communicating that out is important. Because what happens, let me assure you, it happens. They build garbage nests in my property. What happens is we get new neighbors that don't know, and so they move in and they don't get garbage containers, or bear-proof garbage containers. And the bears take all the garbage out, and they make a garbage nest up in the hillsides. And they've done it multiple times on my property. And, and so they just go back there and shoot through the garbage at their, at their leisure. So it's really important that homeowners understand if there are systems in place to help after a weather event, to communicate those systems and encourage people. And, you know, if they can leave it out, like, within an hour or two of the, of the garbage trucks coming in, the bears won't likely take it. But if they leave it out the night before, it's a smorgasbord.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. And on that note, we, we were talking about other bear issues over email. And one thing that really struck me from a couple of other cities, one in particular, and I think Whistler, education and outreach, very, and that's something we could do in the existing contract with our, with messaging as well, just starting ASAP on, on that. So I would just add to that from what you were, what you were saying, given the new residents coming in, it's, it's good to do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's so bad. They will, they, they tore my garbage shed apart. I had to rebuild my garbage shed because a bear dismantled my garbage shed. It is zeal to get at the garbage cans.
Zeal. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. While we're getting, well, wait till the TV's taken care of. Uh-oh, there we go.
So we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Yes. Oh, there we go.
No, we're not. We're not taking a recess.
Nope, here we are.
All right, thank you. You know, at the Mobility Committee, Gary, we had a really good explanation that I had not thought about, about why it's important not to disrupt schedules and why it's important to keep them steady. And do you want to just repeat that, or perhaps Recology would like to repeat it? But it was something I hadn't thought about in terms of not sending out, you know, if we have an inclement event, not disrupting the whole schedule for that, for that event. And there's good reasoning behind that. Do you want to kind of repeat that?
I'm gonna ask our friends from Recology to come up. I watched that video. I was not there at that meeting. I do, and I am not recalling that comment. But thank you for asking.
Anthony Brocato, General Manager, Recology, King County. So I'm trying to think back to one of the specific questions, I think, around that. But, but by and large, specifically during an inclement weather event, a lot of it has to do with scheduling and also with our drivers during the, the time of day and just basically communicating to the rest of community, you know, where, where collection times and where we're at. I guess, kind of, if you wouldn't mind, kind of maybe another particular example of maybe what we're talking about at that point.
I think it had to do more with communications, but also driver schedules and how hard it is once you've disrupted the schedule to get it back on, you know, if you come out at an irregular date, then it takes several weeks to get it back to a regular schedule. And I think the, the point was that the more you can keep to a regular schedule, the more efficient it is.
Oh, correct. Okay, that makes, I, resonates a bit with me there. So, so with that, when we, when we dispatch our drivers and their schedules and hours that they can be out on the road, rather than, than sending drivers out and kind of doing a hodgepodge of collection of where we might have missed, we're gonna be more efficient and get the most material off the ground, whether regardless of commodity, by keeping that same schedule and revisiting it. Oftentimes during an inclement weather event, our drivers will be out there 14 hours a day. We'll have drivers helping each other out to pick up areas where maybe there's some extra tonnage and they're not able, or they're filling up their trucks much quicker. So staying within that schedule allows us to, maybe their days are longer, but it's when we start rerouting drivers to other areas that we, we really lose efficiency and wind up generally missing more, more people or falling behind. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Okay, I think we're gonna continue with the presentation, Gary. Thanks.
All right.
One other thing we talked about at the last meeting and definitely at the study session was the ICAP, the Issaquah Climate Action Plan. And very proud to have the first bullet here that came from our conversations with Recology over the past few months. But they've committed in the new contract to a full-time waste zero specialist focused on Issaquah. As I admitted, we, we do have that as part of the contract now, the, the outreach, but not a full-time dedicated to Issaquah. So that will, that is quite, quite amazing for us. And I just want to hark back to the last presentation about staffing that City Administrator Bobowitz mentioned, that this will help us with the staffing by having this full-time person from Recology as part of this contract. So I'm very excited about that. Again, inspecting all recycling containers for contamination, consider our outreach and track any reporting results. And then again, this came up, I believe, at the committee meeting. And that's examining the contamination within what's allowable, because there are certain rules and regulations that we do need, need to follow for privacy in terms of making sure when we're inspecting, inspecting the contamination. Targeted outreach to multifamily and commercial customers with low diversion. Again, this is gonna, this kind of couples with the first point of the full-time staff. What we've, what we've learned through our work with the ecology, but others in the reading region, including my recent work at Redmond previous to here, is getting out on the street, talking to the, the managers of the complexes. So this is gonna be a huge step of having this full-time staff to actually get, make those rounds consistently and building those relationships. And then finally, recycling and education events at the Gilman Village Store. Customer service, so she came up at, at the study session a little bit, but then a little bit more at the committee meeting. And that we, what we've agreed upon is every other year, customer satisfaction survey, which Recology will be launching, will be working closely with them and our communication staff, Thomas Rush, to identify issue, gather customer suggestions. And then this will be a baseline for the area focus as we move along. So it's something we're gonna track over the 12-year period. And again, we, I mentioned the annual report that we will always offer to council. This will be part, part of it, you know, every other year. And we'll be seeking your input and the board's input before, the boards and commissions before we launch that survey. Again, we'll work closely with Recology on that. And then we'll be able to again, track that for the 12 years and then use that information during the next cycle, 12 years from now. And then finally, example of the garbage rate examples, this was from, from the study session, just a reminder. So again, the first two columns here, Issaquah rates currently, the 2022 rates. And these are for three different sizes. And the second column is just an example focused on the first column, the sink, the, the 32 to 53 gallon. So currently, existing east side disposal, that's in Corbin County, has a 4223 rate. So if we look at the last three, this is information from the RFP. It has not changed for Recology, Republic, and Waste Management. And as you can see, for the 32 to 35, the proposed rates were, ranged from 32, which was Recology's rate, to 52. And the dumpster, we ranged from 389, with Republic being the lowest, to Recology at 585. And then for the Dropbox, from 297, Waste Management to 315. So those are just examples to give you a flavor for what we had in the, for the rates. So back to alternatives. So this is again, in lieu of the recommendation, which is to move forward with authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. The alternatives would be to add or delete specific requests for proposed alternatives and authorize a final contract with Recology. We, again, we would not need to come back for that. Direct administration to negotiate contract changes beyond those RFP alternatives, so something new, or direct administration to begin discussions with one of the other vendors. And again, I said this a little too soon. The recommendation is that the administration recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute the city's 12-year, excuse that typo, solid waste contract with the highest rated proponent, Recology, of King County. And I will leave that to questions. And for myself, Recology, or Jeff Brown, we're, we're all here and ready to answer your questions.
Thank you, Gary. I'm again, gonna go back to the Chair, Chair Joe of Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. This item was considered in that committee. And was there any additional information you'd like to add for the benefit of council or the public?
I would just like to thank Gary and his team. I know that last year, they started the industry review with all three of the proponents. They read all three of the proposals. We only had to read one of the contracts. Thank you. And the team also interviewed the proponents, visited the sites for all three of them, including the recycling facilities, to examine their operations. And do appreciate all the hard work that was put into this effort. My comments are just that we are recommending approval after we reviewed the item. We do appreciate the fact that Recology came back with some additional items in the area of the electric vehicle opportunities for us. We understand the technology is still emergent, and we need to not be the first out of the chute, but be smart out of the chute in how we adopt those new electric vehicles. Also appreciate the added terms are put into inclement weather to help protect us and be clear to our citizens that they can put out doubles if they are missed during an inclement weather event. And then finally, I do want to recognize that the rates are going up for this contract. We had a very favorable contract that was put in place by prior councils, and, and we benefited from that over the years. The rates are going up, but they are in line with what we're seeing on the east side and with our other cities out there. And I think that the opportunity, even though the rates are going up, the opportunity to have a full-time recycling specialist or zero-waste specialist in town is an opportunity that we have to, to take advantage of that and learn new things as a city and educate our citizens and the people that are moving in and out of multifamily residential properties. That's where the contamination is not making progress, and is certainly the worst. And so overall, the committee came back and is recommending approval of this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Joe. I'm gonna open up to questions. I see Councilmember Hunt has some questions.
Thank you. Keeping in mind that it is a substantial increase over prior rates and that I believe from the contracts, low-income individuals will be eligible for discounted rates if the city has utility programs that are, it basically carries over from other city utility programs into this contract. So I wondered if you could explain that a bit and how that works, and then also explain how we get the word out, because it is a big increase. And especially for, for low-income folks, I think it could be important for them to know about, about the increase and also about options for paying.
Absolutely. So the information is- So the information is on our website about rate credits for all of our utilities, including solid waste. And I believe, right now, there is a low-income senior discount for, for solid waste. And I'll just have to double-check that and I can just confirm that with you tomorrow. In terms of the contract, and Jeff, you can maybe add on to this, or Anthony, or Logan again, but our contract does state that Recology will follow what is included in our, in our policies and codes related to those discounts. And Jeff, I'm just going to ask you to confirm that that is very typical with other, from your experience with other jurisdictions with having that language?
Yes, and I should point out that it's, it's not prescriptive typically of a certain percentage. It's intended to float with the city's utility policies. So if your utility policy changes over the next year, applying to all utilities, they're obligated to match the city's overall policy. So if you were looking for X percentage reduction for these certain class of people, you won't find in the contract. You'll just find matching the city's programs.
Thank you, Jeff.
I think the second part to that question more was about general community information about rate increases. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Also making sure that the information gets out about the discount programs. I know from Cascade, serving on Cascade Water Alliance previously, there is a discount program in Issaquah for water, and it was very, it was not used very often because people didn't know where to go on the website and didn't know it was available and things like that. So it's, it's more of a general awareness of the rate increase, but also general awareness of, for those who are eligible for the discounts, to push that information out and what the strategy would be.
Right, I'd recommend, and I think a twofold approach. One, what we've heard a lot, not just on this question, but others, let's get the word out early about this contract and what's, what's coming in terms of the rates, which are going up, we talked about today, why they're going up, and the services. So I think that'd be part of that. But I think, you know, the other thing I'd like to, you know, commit to is that utility rate information, rate reduction for, for all utilities, and somehow working, you know, working together with finance and communications to get that word out more consistently. So, and maybe even, you know, tracking a little more too of how are we reaching out and who's coming in. Like you said, at Cascade, it was a very, very good information and rate that they offered at Cascade, but not a lot of takers. So that's something we could, we could track as well.
City Administrator Bob Kuritz, could you talk a little bit more about how we might be able to inform, especially those low-income residents?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This has been a struggle for us. You know, part of it is low-income residents in single-family homes versus low-income residents in multifamily. The multifamily piece is much more difficult. And talking with Autumn Monahan, our Director of Administrative Services, I think we, well, the staff believes, the administration believes that this change, really, we need to refresh the entire approach. I think we've not been as successful as we would like to be. Other communities around the region and other communities around the country have had good programs. Again, it's a resource issue, and I think as we look at the 2023 work plan, that's something that we want to make a priority. We have an additional staff member now that recently been hired in communications, so I think that will help us with that. The finance staff, I think, has some good ideas, but we recognize we need to refresh the approach because the multifamily is very difficult.
Councilmember De Michelle?
May I interrupt you, Mr., Madam Mayor? We had, Recology had additional information on the last topic.
Sounds great.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Councilmember Hall for alerting me.
Appreciate it. Thank you, yeah. Appreciate the comment, Councilmember Hunt, and I think it's a really important issue. One of the things we could, huh? Oh, sorry, I'm Logan Harvey, Government Relations Manager for Recology, King County. Appreciate it. Thank you. One of the things that we could do to partner on this and help raise awareness of that program is do a bill insert. We could do that on the first bill of the new contract, and so we could put that in. You're getting your new bill, the bill's really high, and we could include information about your low-income program in that exact same bill. So that's something that we could work with the city on to do, and we'd be happy to partner with you on.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember De Michelle, did you have yours up or microphone?
Yes. Yeah, and I love that idea. We have a natural network at the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank and our Human Services, and I believe during the pandemic that Human Services was very active in contacting our low-income residents. And so those are all outlets that I think we need to think about as well, but, and I know our communications people are on top of it, but I think we've got such a nice built-in network with some of our community partners.
Thank you. Council, Deputy Council President Hall, did you have a comment or question? Any other questions at this time? Is anyone prepared to make a motion? I'm kind of staring down the committee chair.
I'm supposed to make a motion?
I don't know.
All right. Can you put it on screen?
We sure can.
I'd make a motion, the administration.
No, I got a better one for you.
Excuse me. Sorry.
There you go. I always have a cheat sheet.
I'm not used to making motions, I'm sorry.
You're the chair.
I know. I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the Conference of Garbage Recycling and Compostables Collection Services Contract with Recology, King County Incorporated, for the period July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2034.
All right, we'll second that motion.
And we'll hustle back to the chair. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I want to strongly support this motion, and I really want to thank Gary and the staff for a really good and thorough process. I really felt when I was going through it and reading about it and all the work that you did, that I could really trust the outcome because there were multiple ways that you measured the responses from each of the applicants. So really, really appreciate the process. Recology did indeed score very, very high on many of the elements, and especially I was impressed with their score on responses for customer service and their responses on equity. And I think the comment that was in one of the comments from the reviewers was that on equity that they were head and shoulders, you know, hands down. And I think that's really important. The fact that Recology is an employee-owned firm was a really important thing for me as well. We haven't mentioned the Recology store, and I have to say, it's one of my favorite places in Issaquah. And again, Recology was the only one that offered that, that service. I think it's very popular, and I love to go in there with all my recyclables. I just took two and a half years' worth of batteries back to them and was able to dispose of them. So I'm very pleased that we're going to have that continue. I think that Recology heard our concerns about electric vehicles, and I appreciated the response that they provided there. I will continue to advocate for better engagement around recycling to multifamily residents. And I know it's a big challenge. I just think that it's really, really important. And under Good of the Order, I'm going to talk about the challenges that are being faced at the Cedar Hills landfill. But we, we can do a better job with recycling. I think we've got residents who are ready and willing to do a better job. They just need education and outreach. And so we'll continue to work with Recology to do that, but I'm very, very happy to support this motion, and I will be voting to, I'll be saying yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. It was kind of a race after that, but I'm going to go to Councilmember Hunt.
All right, thank you. I plus-one to Councilmember De Michelle, and I also will be supporting the motion. I appreciated the work of the staff and of the committee that looked at this, as well as our commissions. I did have a new emerging issue that I also wanted to speak to, and that is regarding bears. As was mentioned earlier, we are in an area where bears get into the garbage. It is a very real issue for us. And actually, between when the council committee heard this issue and today, we had an incident where a bear that had been spotted dozens of times in Issaquah actually had to be euthanized because it, because of its behavior and getting into garbage and was, was deemed unsafe. And that made the Seattle Times, and we don't want to be a community that makes the news in that kind of a way. We also got an email about this. Again, this came in after the committee meeting, so it's not a reflection, it's a, not a reflection on the committee, but we had an email from a member of our community that's active with the coexisting with carnivores efforts to track and make sure that people know about how to coexist in our neighborhoods with our wildlife that are so important to the character of, of Issaquah and one of the reasons why it's such a great place to live. So she was concerned about this contract, making sure that we are doing what we can to coexist with carnivores, including bears, and that we're doing what we can in that contract. So I did reach out, we had a conversation, had a conversation with Gary about what can be done. It can be, we could consider, for example, having wildlife-impacted areas where you would be required to have bear-resistant garbage cans. This would take care of some of the issues where people that are new come in and don't know that this is such an issue, and you have the garbage nests that were mentioned earlier. But this is, this is a very real issue. It is something that I think we should look at. We could potentially mandate areas where they would be required. We could potentially also subsidize or, as the city could also potentially look into how we could make that happen. So there's a bigger conversation. I would ask my council colleagues to consider it, especially in light of the options we have, which can be done outside of this contract. And also, there's recent studies about how bear-proofing, as would be expected, greatly reduces the negative interactions that people end up having and the conflicts that people end up having with bears. So I, I have some more information about what's been done in some other cities, but I think it would be great to have a bigger conversation with the staff, looking into it and what the options are for us specifically. So that would be my ask for the future. Again, doesn't have to be done with this contract, with this contract, but I would like to be in the news for being a city that coexists with carnivores and not make the news for having to have a bear be euthanized, which just recently happened.
Great comments. I think Deputy Council President Hall, and then Council President.
Thank you very much. A lot of the same comments. Since this is such an important decision for council, I'm going to walk through some of the most important reasons why I'm going to be supporting this recommendation tonight, and then also a list of things that I'd like us to keep in mind in the future. So completely agree with the recommendation to move forward with the new solid waste management contract with Recology. I want to start by saying I've been very, very impressed and pleased with the work of, with our staff, with our consultant, Jeff, and with the proposers of, proposals of all the haulers. But a special thank you to Gary, to Jeff, and to all the other city staff that participated on the review committee. Thank you very much for your hard work. So, yeah, there are a number of reasons I feel really good about this proposal with Recology, all of which were directly influenced by community priorities. First and foremost, I just want to say I put a pretty high, and I mentioned this at our committee meeting too, but I put a pretty high premium on the recommendations of our staff and our subject matter experts, especially in this area. I would have to have some pretty major concerns, or a competing project would have to be very compelling for me to consider an alternative at this point, and that threshold hasn't been met. Not having to transition between haulers is also very compelling to me, and avoiding potential interruptions in service is certainly in the community's best interest. One point of concern after last year's snowpocalypse was our policy around inclement weather, and we brought that up, we did our due diligence, we covered all our bases, and I believe the community will be very happy and satisfied with where we ended up with the policy update around inclement weather. This proposal also includes an expansion to the recyclables on, either on the curb or at the Gilman Village Store, which is very exciting. It includes that waste zero specialist focused on Issaquah, focused on contamination reduction and diversion, which will help us accomplish our work set out in the Issaquah Climate Action Plan. Similar to the remarks that Chair Joe brought up, I am convinced that there is some electric vehicle innovation and feasibility work necessary to overcome reliability issues, our unique geography, being a city in the, in the hills and in the valley. But even so, the EV runway that is described in this agreement is certainly in line with community priorities and also our climate action plan, so I'm very happy by that. And then to Council, Councilmember De Michelle's point too, I'm also very pleased to be working with an employee-owned company. All that said, there are some future considerations I'd like just to plop on our radar, so, so we don't lose track of it. No changes, just areas that I wanted to highlight. So the first is, I think we'll continue to see extended winter weather events impact our region, and I'd like for us to continue to monitor how our policies meet residents' needs and whether or not emerging practices elsewhere are delivering better services to the community. And I think we can all agree that, you know, we should always be on the lookout for areas of improvement, emerging practices, policy outcomes, et cetera. I also really appreciated Recology's high scores on customer service, customer service responsiveness to issues, your call center approach is so important to our residents and to this council, that issues can be responded to in a timely and effective manner. These issues can also provide invaluable information to measure policy outcomes and whether or not our systems are working well, right? So in the same spirit as my comments on inclement weather, I think it's important to monitor how these feedback loops can be improved based on what we're seeing on the ground and what we're seeing work well elsewhere. To Councilmember Hunt's points, point with recent stories about that bear eluding authorities in the Issaquah area, I think the council should have that conversation about wildlife areas in town, wildlife containers, and what that means from a public policy standpoint. So I think that's a very good point. Thanks for bringing that up. And then finally, which has already been said, our new rates. We do, we did have an incredible deal last time around, and now we have to catch up to the market. There will be a noticeable difference to rate pairs, and it's important that the city and this council monitor what that means for the overall utility pie and the greater affordability question. So it's something we're going to have to keep our eye on very closely. And I know that later this year, we'll be discussing whether or not we should temporarily waive the administrative fee or potential other actions to help reduce that impact and create a runway. So I know there's much more to come on that. Again, just some things I wanted to keep on our radar moving forward, but with all that, I'm absolutely supportive of this new contract with Recology, and I'll be voting in favor tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Council President?
Thank you. Well, a lot has been said that is very well spoken, so I'm not going to repeat that. My comments come in kind of two, two-prongs. So first, I'm going to be supporting this tonight. I wanted to thank the team for all of the hard work. It was very apparent in how transparent the review process was, how thorough things were. I also can see through the later stages of this that we really achieved a lot of wins that were really important through the negotiation process. I found that the use of the survey was really important. My compliments on the inclusion of a controversial question, which definitely increased the engagement substantially. But the second prong of my comments are, when I'm looking back on this, I recognize that the choices made of what those questions were very much set the scope of our conversation. We very much used the results of those five or six questions to the community to say, hey, what was really important to the community was not reducing the services so that they could save money, and it was not, or and it was, electric vehicles and those types of things. But if I'm going to look at that, I'm going to recognize that we hadn't really had a policy conversation about what should be our scope. We hadn't had something brought to the council, or even to my knowledge, to the administration that says, wow, if I'm really thinking big about this, here are the great things that Portland, for example, does with their waste management situation. Here's what we should be learning from the best practices across the country. I didn't see anything in here about, should we consider composting requirements? What more could we be doing, or, you know, recycling requirements? What more could we be doing with multifamilies other than just... What more could we be doing with multifamilies other than just having somebody available who can increase those conversations and do outreach? So I think I would just ask the administration to really help us dream big at the outset of the process because once some of those first decisions are made about what questions to ask the community, it, it sets the stage in a way that is very difficult to move away from. I know we, as council, often hear from the administration, oh, but, you know, we've gone through the process thus far. And so I would just ask the administration to try and help us not cut off opportunities at the start of the process when something like this happens. And so I, I would just leave that out there as my ask to the administration as we're looking at future big projects. But overall, I will be supporting this, and I look forward to seeing how we can have conversations about other aspects. Thank you.
So I could tease Chair Joe and make him repeat his motion, but I've got the piece of paper, so I won't do that to him. So I don't know if there's any more discussion. Oh, go ahead, Chair Joe.
Great. Thank you. I want to thank everyone sitting up here for reading through a 68-page contract that reads like a, a porn novel, but I'm glad you did it, and that's awesome. I just want to point out that the contract that we're adopting tonight does have some ability for us to make some of those choices that Council President Walsh is talking about and have the discussion about how the administrative fee will be used, as Deputy Council President Hall said. And that's going to be a budget discussion for us, and it's going to be important for us to, to be thoughtful about how we want to set that fee and use those, use those funds. I'd also point out that under 4.1.29, the carbon neutrality section, it does allow the city to potentially set a rate for carbon, excuse me, to talk about carbon neutrality with the hauler as we look at our climate goals and the climate action plan that we have along the way. So it does give us a mechanism to kind of look at that. Also, under 5.3.7, there's a carbon offset section, which talks about the city potentially setting a carbon offset rate based on the amount of carbon that we're producing, and add that to the rate for our customers potentially to look at the climate issues and how we're impacting our world as well. So those can be mechanisms that we can look at to improve our climate action plan or to implement the things we would like to see in the climate action plan in the future too. So while the contract's going to be a 12-year agreement, I think there are a lot of opportunities for us to, to make progress. And I would just ask that the staff try to put together a plan with Recology for the zero-waste staff member so that when the contract gets put in place in July of 2023, we already have a plan set up for that staff member to implement and go after, and we have measurables that we want to look at and that we want to monitor along the way. So we can use that staff member on the ground to make some of the progress that we're talking about today on climate action as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Council President Walsh's comments led me to ask a question. Will, I, and this is, I think, for the government affairs person from Recology. Could the city work with Recology on the future surveys to make sure that if there are emerging issues that we, having to do with customer satisfaction with the services that are provided by Recology, 12 years is a long time. So could we, would the city be able to work with Recology at those intervals in time when you're doing the survey to make sure that we're getting the information about customer satisfaction that's, that we need to continue with the survey, with the contract, rather?
And Logan Harvey, Government Affairs, Recology, King County. Yeah, absolutely. It'll, it'll always be a partnership. That's why we see this contract. We don't see this as we're a separate entity and you're a separate entity. This is a partnership. We want to work with you, and so if council has questions that they want asked on that kind of a, a survey, we, we would ask them. When we did a survey in the city of Maple Valley, they had a communications subcommittee, and they ran through and decide, determined a number of questions, and that's what we ended up putting on, on that one. It was a conversation, for sure, but we, we would always be open to that. And if, you know, we're doing a kind of a, or a citywide survey, we could put in any number of questions. The focus is on performance and things like that, but if there were additional thoughts, then we would support council on that, of course, for sure.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. It has been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the Comprehensive Garbage, Recyclables, and Compostables Collection Service Contract with Recology, King County, Incorporated, for the period July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is that 20, 2034? Yeah, they have 2034 in here. Is that the correct date?
Yes, you said 2024.
Oh, sorry. July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2034. All those in favor signify by saying?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously, 6-0. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thanks, staff, for all your hard work. These are big contracts to work on because they don't come around very often. So thanks so much. Next item is Good of the Order, and I know at least Councilmember DeMichele has one thing. I'm just going to quickly list off a few meetings and then hand it over to her. Tuesday, June 21, City Council Meeting. The anticipated agenda items include appointment and swearing in of our new police chief and the equity framework. On Wednesday, June 15, the community listening session is at Blakely Hall in Isiqua Highlands, and discussion topics will include public safety, emergency management, current development, which is land use, and infrastructure. And the June 27 Special Committee of the Whole Council anticipated agenda items include the Capital Finance Committee Task Force Recommendations Implementation Plan. Extra note, City Council photos will be taken prior to the committee of the whole meeting. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. So that is the June 27 meeting. And I'll hand it over to Councilmember DeMichele, who wants to share some thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I just want to report it. On May 30, I attended the Sound Cities Association-sponsored tour of the Cedar Hills landfill. The purpose of the tour was to concretely illustrate for elected officials the decisions that will need to be made about the landfill. And as I'm sure you are aware, Cedar Hills is running out of space with the current pit projected to be filled in about three years, and then a ninth pit projected to be filled after six years. So altogether, there's about a decade before the landfill is completely full. However, that timeline could be considerably extended if the 30% of refuse that quote-unquote "doesn't belong here" could be diverted through recycling, and that was repeated to us over and over again as we took the tour. Once the landfill is full, the path forward would be closure of the Cedar Hills landfill and either incineration, or the second option is exporting waste for, to a landfill somewhere else, like the city of Seattle, which sends its waste to California. Both have long-range adverse financial and ecological impacts. So one strategy to forestall the closure of Cedar Hills landfill is to mandate recycling, and the presenters and officials that were working with us that day said they want to work with local jurisdictions to either pass local ordinances mandating recycling or work with state legislators to put a statewide legal platform around mandated recycling or both. So thanks to Mayor Pauli. We're following up with Amy Ockerlander, who is the King County Government Affairs Director for the Solid Waste Division, and she is also the mayor of Duval. And Mayor Ockerlander will be our contact for landfill initiatives going forward. She is projecting that development of proposed legislation will take about two years. So we'll be hearing more as we go forward. The tour was extremely informative. It was such an experience, and we were given every opportunity to ask questions of Pat McLaughlin, who is the solid, King County Solid Waste Director, and other officials on the tour, and I would urge my fellow council members to take advantage of future opportunities as they arise. So I wish I were an expert and could answer further questions. I'd do the best that I could, but it certainly was an eye-opener, just taking the tour and hearing the challenges that we're facing there. So.
Thank you for that. There's a lot of excitement around what they're talking about with this regional approach to mandates, but I also know Councilmember Hunt and Julian, who is one of our constant observers, have also done the tour with myself maybe three years ago. It is an eye-opener. It is really something to behold.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other items for Good of the Order? Council President?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment and both thank the mayor for the Isiqua Police Department interviews. We have a unique and really, what I really think is a great approach to it in broadening the scope of the interviews. It's not just, you know, HR sitting in there making, you know, having a conversation with people and picking somebody out. It's really HR taking the larger number and bringing it down to a smaller category. And so on May 26, we had the top three candidates come in and interview with three different panels in pretty much a half-day experience, where one of the panels was filled with community members, including Tony Curry, who was here earlier, and other board members. Two council members were supposed to be there, but, and the mayor. So that was one of the panels. Another panel is people within the department that will report up to the person, and then another is our senior leadership team. Sometimes it's the same role in other cities or other things. It just gives a really great perspective on different questions and different people's experiences with that role. And so I participated on that, had a great experience with the other members of the community that were there, and then hearing from all three of the panels. And I guess I would just encourage everybody that if you have an opportunity to sit on a hiring panel with the city, it has been, I've done it twice now, and it's been a great experience, so. And I think we came out with a really great candidate, too. So excited about that, too.
Very fun. Thank you, Council President. Anything else for Good of the Order tonight? I'm seeing computers close. There is no executive session this evening, as dated early, therefore, we are adjourned at 9:23. All right.